Good evening. I'd like to welcome you all here tonight. We're just a couple of minutes away from beginning our meeting. Before we begin, I'd invite you to stand and join me in the pledge and then Councilman Mike Lawson will bring the invocation.
Heavenly Father, I just thank you for this day and this opportunity to come together and represent Springdale. Lord, I just pray that you'll be with our employees and our citizens and everyone here tonight, get them home safely, be with them the next few weeks as we have winter weather moving through, keep everybody warm, keep them safe. Lord, I just pray that you'll also be with us tonight and give us some guidance and some wisdom as we have items before us and that everything we do will be in your name. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mike. Okay. I will now call this regular meeting of the Springdale City Council to order. This is Tuesday, January 9th, 2024, and I'll start off by asking our city clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Sprouse?
Here.
Brian Powell?
Here.
Amelia Taldo?
Here.
Jeff Watson?
Here.
Mike Overton?
Here.
Mike Lawson?
Here.
Rex Bailey?
Present.
Randall Harriman?
Here.
Mark Fujurus?
Here.
Ernest Cates?
Here.
All right. Everyone is here, so we obviously have a quorum, so I'll move to number, item four. This is the portion of each meeting that the council sets aside to hear comments from our residents. We ask that if you have a comment to make to the council, that you come to the podium, please state your name and address, keep your comments brief, and understand that what you bring forward tonight will not be acted upon by the council tonight. This is just for them to hear. So this is only about items that are not already on tonight's agenda. Do we have anyone in the room who would like to speak to the council concerning an item not on tonight's agenda? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to item five, the approval of minutes. Council, hopefully you've had an opportunity to look those over. If there are no changes or additions, I'd recommend, I would entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
Just one more second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right. Thank you. We've got a public hearing, item six, and I'm going to turn that over to our city attorney. Ernest?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 12 on the agenda is an ordinance vacating a portion of utilities meant on property located on South Powell Street. It's actually part of the Jean George Elementary Construction Project. The state statute requires that a public hearing be held before the council takes up the ordinance. So is there anyone here that wants to be heard on this particular item? If not, we'll close the public hearing and we'll take it up as item 12.
All right. Thank you. Item seven, procedural motions. What's your pleasure, counsel?
I'll move for both A and B.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion for both A and B. Roll call, please.
Powell?
Yes.
Taldo?
Yes.
Watson?
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fujurus?
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
Before we move on to the next item, counsel, I meant to do this a few items earlier, but Ernest reminded me. You've got a hard copy of a resolution in front of you authorizing the payment of an invoice. We always get these on the agenda. You've okayed us not necessarily bringing these to committee, but this one came late and I'm going to let Colby speak to why we're, we hope you'll consider going ahead and putting this on the agenda tonight at the end of the meeting about item, what, 15, Ernest? Is that what it said? Yeah.
Counsel, this is a resolution to pay an invoice. As you know, we require any invoices over $1 million to receive council approval. We received this late and it is a resolution for $1.4 million to be paid. Geo surfaces, who is doing the turf project, they're actually ahead of schedule. They've done a really good job so far and we just think it's good business to go ahead and pay the invoice as they come in and not have it delayed for another two weeks.
I'll move this resolution be added to the last item of the agenda.
Second.
Okay. Thank you for that and we'll have a roll call when Denise is ready.
Taldo?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes, ma'am.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fujurus?
Yes.
Carries eight zero. And remind me when we get to it to have you all pass the, pass the motion and read it by title only because we didn't include it in the procedural motions.
Okay. Thank you, Ernest, and thank you, counsel, for doing that. We won't make a habit of that. Thank you. All right. We're at item eight. This is an appeal of planning commission's denial of a rezon petition, R23-63 of certain lands from agricultural district A1 to medium density multifamily residential district MF12 at 2202 South 40th Street. Let me go ahead and say this at the beginning before we possibly have a motion and everyone begins to speak and we entertain comments. I'm going to ask tonight that there's a chance, there's a lot of folks that want to comment. Please just know that we're going to, I'm going to time the comments to three minutes so everyone will have a maximum of three minutes to comment. Also, I really, I wasn't in the room at the planning commission meeting, but I was in the next room listening to it. I didn't want to take up a seat and, and there were some, there were some actions and behavior that I hope we can, I hope we can avoid tonight. We ask that everybody be treated with respect, no matter how, how you feel about this issue or which side of the issue you're on and, and we'll, we'll try and get through this and let everybody that needs to speak be heard. We also ask that we not get too repetitive. We've received several emails and certainly we want to hear your comments and your ideas and your, your reasoning for, for whether you support or oppose, but we do ask that we not get too repetitive. If we, we don't need to hear the same thing over and over again, okay? So please help us with that because we've got several other items on the agenda tonight as well. So I've read the, I've read the appeal and I'm going to ask our city attorney to, yeah, to kind of give us a set on this.
Thank you, Mayor. At the December 5th, 2023 Planning Commission meeting, there was a rezoning request, R23-63, I believe is the number, and after a public hearing, it's planning commission, the planning commission voted to deny the rezoning request in its property located at 2202 South 40th Street. Pursuant to our zoning ordinance, the applicant did file a timely appeal stating the reasons why he thought the planning commission's decision was an error and he filed the necessary affidavit stating that necessary notifications have been made of the appeal. So that is how it got placed on the agenda tonight. So I believe the applicant is here if he would like to address the council as to his reasons for the appeal.
You have anything to add?
I think I turned that into.
Yeah.
You did. The, the appeal was timely filed with the necessary information required by ordinance. That's how it got on the ordinance, or the, on the agenda tonight.
Okay. Counsel, how would you like to proceed?
Mayor, as I look out here, I see customers of mine and friends of mine that's against this rezoning, but I believe everybody deserves a vote. So the planning commission took a vote and I think we should take a vote. So I move that we reverse the planning, planning commission's decision.
Okay. We have a motion to, to approve the appeal. Without a second, we will, we'll go ahead and open it up for comments if, if we don't have a second yet.
I will second that because we're doing just for the vote, right? That's what we're doing right now.
This, this helps us move forward to, to hearing comments, I think, yes.
Then I'll second it.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to, to approve the appeal. That said, now we'll open it up for, for comments. Now is the time, if anyone in the audience would like to comment on this, please come to the microphone and clearly state your name and address and then you're free to make your comments.
Hi, I'm Mary Miller. I live at 4005 Clark Avenue and my property backs up to the proposed zoning request. So I just had a few comments. Peaceful Valley is completely comprised of single family homes and most of them are one-story and we feel that this project would change the composition and character of the neighborhood. Due to the narrow configuration of the land behind the homes, two-story multifamily townhouses, homes would loom over our backyards, block the natural light and contribute to light pollution at night. The properties on Clark sit at a lower elevation than that of the proposed development, so the residents of the townhomes could be able to see directly into our homes and our backyards. The reason provided for the appeal of this rezoning, denial by the planning commission was misinformed public. We've done our best to be informed. I think that we reviewed the rules posted on the city website. We met together. We looked at the plans as they were provided to us. We've attended the planning commission meeting, contacted commissioners and city council members. After educating ourselves as well as possible with the information provided regarding this plan, we've decided that we don't want it and if some of the people have the dimensions wrong or the number of buildings wrong, just think of it sort of as a game of telephone. They might not have the exact dimensions or whatever, but they still don't want that large project to be in that location. The project would negatively affect the prosperity and general welfare, provide undue overcrowding and congestion, diminish the character of our neighborhood and reduce our property values and economic stability. Also, the proposal does not fit with the city of Springdale's mission to provide quality services for the betterment of the health, safety, welfare, prosperity, comfort, and convenience of all persons in the city of Springdale. The best use for this land is to support the fiber and atmosphere of the serene, happy neighborhood that has been in existence for well over 30 years. The proposed project might fit more appropriate in a more urban area or somewhere near downtown. The community of those directly affected by this has indicated where it stands and I hope that you all will support us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mary. All right. As, as, if there's another speaker, as you're making your way to the microphone, our city attorney needed to say something else. Thank you.
I meant to mention for the record that, that in your packet you have the minutes, verbatim minutes from the planning commission public hearing as well as the staff's recommendation for the rezoning request. If you had any questions for staff.
Yeah, and Patsy is here if, if we have questions for her.
My name's Dale Strauss. I live at 4201 Clark Avenue and once in a while I think I got the mayor's mail, just so you know. I also, this is one of my neighbors, I disagree with this new multifamily complex and every day I, I drive over to work and I go by the ballpark and I see many all around those rural areas over there, multifamily complexes, and that's great and that's fine, but in my community, in my street, you have to understand, most of our bedrooms, most of our, our, our good living spaces on that backside of that house, and I'll tell you, it'd be like a deer stand right in my backyard, looking right in my backyard, looking right in my, my, my rooms in the back of my house. And I would consider that a grave infringement on my privacy and I, I don't relish the idea of someone looking down on me, not having that privacy and, and that whole row, all those neighbors, all our neighbors, just about all of them have fencing up and it's not just to keep our dogs in, it's, it's to protect our privacy. And I would just consider this very grievous. I wouldn't enjoy it and no one would argue a, a single dwelling complex there and, and Mr. Taldo could probably still make some good money just putting in some homes for, for families. I don't really believe another multiplex complex is really needed there. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bill. If you want to speak, be, be, be ready to come on up. You can even line up if you want to. That part doesn't matter for two or three of you.
My name is Les Nelson and I live at 4004 Chapman.
Sorry, what was your first name again?
Les.
Les.
Or as Alexa calls me, Le. But I can't get her to do that, but, just very quickly, the appeal said that there were certain things that were either misrepresented or misinformed and things of that nature. So I expected to hear what those were and again, I don't really feel like that we got there and so I've looked at everything myself and I've had people look at it, they don't have anything to do with it and everybody that I talked to pretty much agrees that this really, this doesn't fit this lot. It's, Mr. Taldo told us that it had the same as his other projects. We went over and looked at those other projects. They have a lot more room in this lot. They have, they're all facing the street, not facing a parking lot. They're all have a big lot behind them that's either A1 or commercial or already, you know, multi, multifamily housing. So it's not the same thing by a long shot. So anyway, I'm just trying to figure out exactly what goes on with there and I know that there's probably a thought process that, oh, we need to build apartments, we need to build apartments, there's a housing shortage. But I'm saying that the housing shortage is houses, not apartments. People want to live in single family homes and we're not building those at the rate we're building apartments. And so, you know, one of the things that I kind of worry about is people don't trust government anymore. And one of the things that I'm very concerned about is what are the reasons that is? And I believe the reason is, is because at some point recently, people have convinced us that we can do the wrong thing for the right reasons. We can make a wrong decision for the bigger picture. And I think that's really negatively impacted our trust in government because we really need to be able to say that, well, I'll do the right thing and I'll let the consequences come at a later date. I feel like that people need homes, single family homes, that's what they're trying for, that's what they're wanting for. And if you don't get a single family home, if you live in an apartment all your life, you'll never be able to retire because that, that wealth that you build up in your home by paying off that mortgage allows you to get to a point where you can really retire. Without that, we're going to be 20 years, 30 years down the road, we're going to have to use tax dollars to keep these people alive. And I don't think that's happy for anybody. So anyway, I ask you to support single family housing. I think one of the ways that we can encourage them to build single family housing is to stay with our zoning requirements. This is where single family housing goes and that's what you've got to put there. So thank you so much for your time and your effort and I want to thank you for, you know, what you do. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I want to thank you for letting us come up here and speak. My name's William Miller. I live at 4005 Chapman Ave. in Springdale there.
Which, which street? I'm sorry, sir.
Chapman.
Chapman?
Ave. And I've been there just about to the month of when it opened and I'm used to seeing single house living. I think it's the best for the neighborhood and I'm here just to support my neighbors. Thank you very much. You all have a good evening.
Thank you, William.
My name is Bruce Leahy. I live at 4205 Clark Avenue and I'd like to ask two questions. To the people behind me, all of those opposed to this, would you please stand? All of those in favor of this, would you please stand? Thank you.
Mike Nelson, I live 4104 Chapman Avenue in Springdale. Back in the nineties, what I wanted to speak about, when I was sitting where you all are sitting, we had some issues back then about a lot of industry, commercial businesses impacting residential areas. So that was the one thing we spoke then. I know Patsy came on, not sure exactly when, but she's done an awesome job with the planning commission, past and present, on bringing everything up and what we spoke about was we use the apartments as a buffer between the commercial or industrial into the neighborhoods. And that's where they fit. That's where the master plan fits. Lot of effort, lot of time went into that by the planning commission, past and present, still today, and also the council. And that was brought to the council and it was approved by the council for those, those plans. And that is my concern. Why are we wanting to jump ship now? Like I said, Patsy and the planning commission, they've done a pretty good job, an awesome job actually, taking care of, keeping us in that mode. You go down Jean George Boulevard, that's where we're, we're seeing a lot of activity with the apartments. They fit. They fit that area. You know, going in after the fact into a neighborhood that's been established for years and we're going to start dropping multifamily in on top of that, that's what concerns me. Are we going to start that all over Springdale? Anywhere we've got an acre and a half lot, two acre lot or bigger, is that what we're going to start expecting? This, I think, is what I would like for you all to look at. I have nothing against Mr. Taldo. He's done wonderful things for Springdale, okay? This isn't that. If one of your names was on that, I would, I would still be standing here talking to you about my concerns, okay? I, I don't want this to be a personal issue with anybody, but just please, please take a serious look at this. I think this could start setting the tone for other builders that want to come in and buy a two acre lot and do the same thing in our neighborhoods. Nobody really wants that and that's what Springdale for decades now has really tried to do is keep that buffer with the apartments. We've done that between Lowe's and the, and the strip malls and stuff there. We have an apartment complex right across from the school. It fits, right?
Okay. Mike, it, we've, we've got our, got our three minutes, so.
Okay. All right. I'm sorry, but please just take a look at that for me.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mary Ann Bloss. I live at 4207 Langford and also own the house at 4300 Clark. Mr. Nelson just brought up a very, very valid point and I think that if you all would go to Fayetteville and drive around where they have done what is being protected for, for us, they have taken single homes and built up for multifamily. It has totally ruined that town. I grew up there. I, I do not want to go back now because it's not, it's everywhere through town. It has ruined the traffic, it has ruined this, the city itself and it's, it doesn't fit. So if you need to see it, please go to Fayetteville. I'd hate to see Springdale turn into that. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Deborah Rec. I live at 4103 Chapman Avenue and I don't know how good I am at speaking under pressure, but there are a couple of things I wanted to bring up and one of them is that, I think one of the things that people are trying to say is that Peaceful Valley is an established community. It's built on people who are trying to build a space for them where they're at and I don't want to diminish those that live in townhomes, but a lot of the times people who rent are temporary. They, there are a lot of, there are many good people, I'm not trying to say that they're bad people, but they're temporary. They are on their way from one place to another and most of the people in Peaceful Valley, it's a place they mean to stay for a while. And so I think that's a big concern that, that we have here is that when you build a home for, a temporary home, that the people won't have the same concerns and respect for the community. I'm also concerned about the infrastructure there. When, you know, 40th Street is not meant for high volume traffic and I believe that there's, you know, 30, 40 parking spaces in that area and it's at a very constricted intersection. You've got 40th Street and you've got Chapman Avenue coming in and there's not a lot of space between there or Clark Avenue and I feel like there's going to be even more congestion due to that construction. And my third concern has to do with the school. You know, I see the kids that go to Walker, Walker Elementary is an amazing school, the teachers work really hard there and it's full. It's beyond capacity. At this point in time, there's over 20 students that are being bused to other schools because Walker doesn't have the room. At this point, we're using the old media center as a library or as a classroom and for other spa, workspace for instructional assistance because there are no more classrooms in that school. And if you bring in 12 families, that's families full of children possibly and there's no space for them at the school. And when you're bused out from the school, that means you're missing 30 minutes of instruction at the beginning of the day and 30 minutes of instruction at the end of the day and the kids need all the instruction. And those are some of my main concerns, that if that structure is built there, it'll impact the neighborhood in a negative way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for letting me speak. My name is Lonnie Johnson and I live at 4103 Clark Avenue in Springdale here. And something that did not occur to me until about three weeks ago, we had the meeting with the planning commission. My, the house next to me was up for sale. My neighbor moved in about three weeks ago and I went over and introduced myself like a good citizen and he made a statement. He found out about the plans for that property back there. He said, if my realtor had told me they were planning on doing that, I wouldn't have bought this house. So you know what that does to property values. So with that, thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Lonnie.
My name is Ian Rec. I also live at 4103 Chapman Avenue. When I first heard about this, my first concern was what would happen to the neighborhood when a multifamily structure would be put in there. I admit I am a transplant. I've been in Arkansas for nine years. It's a very peaceful community and we like it. Our neighbors are great. My kids are educated well. Unfortunately, my experience, I grew up in Portland, Oregon and I've lived in Salt Lake City and I have seen what happens to multifamily dwellings. They look fine, they rent fine when they first get out there and unfortunately, the kind of people that I have seen that live in those, I hesitate to use more stronger words than I probably should, but the, the conditions of the, the tenants and the properties diminish quickly and that is not something that I need or we need in our neighborhood. I don't want my kids around it. I don't want to be around it. And I, that almost sounds personal, but it's, I have actually learned quite a bit coming to the last meeting I was here. I had no idea that so many things can affect a neighborhood when one thing changes and I would hate to have to, I don't know, feel like I need to move so that I can be more comfortable where I live. And so those are, those were my first concerns when I first heard about it, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name's Mike Jones. I live on 3811 Valley View Drive, which is the corner of 40th and Valley View, right there on the edge, across from the school. I am one of the ones that sent in a letter to the council. Hopefully you've all had that. I'll be very quick on this. My issues, I, I tried to apply logic to when I thought through this quite a bit. The egress for this property is about 20 yards from a primary intersection that tees into that area on 40th Street, right next to the church. You're all familiar with that. The traffic flow in that area is going to be, for just that one entrance is going to be the equi-
The, this is not one of those larger, scaled, primary operators of multifamily housing. This is a much smaller 18-unit representation area in that, in this very, very small one and a half acre lot, that was designed to be a lot for a single-family building. Again, parking and egress will be an issue. There are multiple trees on this lot, which allowed to be a neighborhood and something like that. With this type of construction, it's almost impossible to maintain those trees, especially where they're located on the lot. They're on the exterior. Parking will have to be an issue there. It'll be primarily concrete. You know, the reason for zoning laws in particular is to protect the housing values of the area. You know, this is not dead smack in the middle of a single-family area, but it's very, very close. And there is no, this does not provide any kind of buffer for anybody in the area. In fact, the applicant in his appeal listed, in fact, the only thing I saw was a single-letter appeal, and I'm assuming that's all that was received. Within that is a pretty vague promise that this will add value, and a vague promise that he'll try to keep as many trees as possible, which is nearly impossible. And I think the last one was, he'll do the best he can to provide green space. You know, it's an acre and a half lot with 18 units, or 18 apartments going on. It'll be impossible to have any kind of green space there. There's no question that this will impact the housing values in that area, and it will be for the derogatory, so I'll let it go on that.
Okay.
I guess that's it. Thank you.
Been over there about seven years, and recently I've been working down at the Lynx Golf Course the last two or so years. And just one issue that's not really related, I agree with everything I've heard so far as a property owner over there in that neighborhood, and that's one of the reasons I moved over there, is to have single-family dwellings. But kind of a little unique perspective, working at the golf course and living down there, two blocks away, right, you know, going back and forth by there, you know, every day for a couple of years. And really, one of the concerns we have down there is the Walker School traffic pickup, especially going backing up almost all the way to Sunset, and all the way down past Levine, and down to exactly where we're talking about, they'd be entering this area down there for 12, or 14, or 24 cars. So there is some safety issues there, I feel like, you know, with young kids coming and going in all directions, and, you know, traffic trying to pass by, and double lanes. And we sure don't need much more traffic on 40th Street, for sure. So I'm against it for a lot of reasons, but that's one that I don't think we've talked about too much. But, you know, a lot of the people where I live are older, you know, 70, 80, 90-years-old people. We all look out for each other. Their driving in that area is totally reckless, out of control, loud, and fast. And I don't think it's going to get any better with more vehicles.
Thank you.
I'm Marty Rhodes. I live at 4002 Clark Avenue, and I've lived there for just over 30 years now. It's been a fantastic neighborhood. Really, been kind of spoiled by it, to be honest. And I know a lot of these people are in my neighborhood, and they're proud homeowners, and they've taken fantastic care of their house. I don't know whether you've driven down that street, or that neighborhood, but the homes on that street are in better shape than they were the day they were built, okay? We've taken a lot of pride and a lot of expense in keeping our homes and our neighborhood looking great, okay? A lot of these people are a lot better spoken than I am, and have a lot more facts than I've got, but I just have one question for you. Is this proposal going to make this community better? Is it going to make Springdale a better place for our citizens? Thank you.
Thank you, Marty.
My name is Ann Long, and I live at 4006 Chapman Avenue, and I have lived there for I am planning on selling my house this year because I'm retiring. It's too hard to take care of it with one person. And this is just not going to, it's not going to help me, and it's not going to help anybody else in the same situation. And I have a question about this entire project. I don't know exactly how the council works, how it functions, what the process is. But what I would like to know is, how did this all come upon us without the citizens being able to comment or vote? It's like, all of a sudden, it's here.
Look, I'll take a stab at answering that, Pam. The, this is the process. This is your opportunity, as was Planning Commission. The, I mean, if someone asks for a rezoning of a piece of property, if a property owner asks for a rezoning of a piece of property, they have every right to ask for that, just as you would if you owned a piece of property that you wanted to get rezoned. It doesn't make them a bad person, doesn't make it a bad thing. So there's a process in place that, once someone requests that rezoning, then that starts the process. Process is to go to Planning Commission, and, just as has happened in this case, if the Planning Commission denies the rezoning, then there's an opportunity to appeal to the city council. City council would have to approve it either way. Even if the Planning Commission approved the rezoning, it would still come to city council. So ultimately, the city council is going to make the decision on the rezoning. Does that help?
Yes. Thank you for your explanation, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else right now? All right. Go ahead, Mr. Taldo.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmen, and Council ladies. I'm going to just start off real quick by showing Sunday's newspaper. I don't know if anybody gets it anymore.
Not in paper form.
I happened to get one on Sunday, this actual paper. But here, on this big letters here, "Area Rental Market Relief Slide Website Reports." And there's a huge, big article in here about the scarcity of multifamily houses in Springdale and in northwest Arkansas. I'm just pointing that out. I guess I've got the three minutes that everybody else has, and so I'm going to hurry on. You might pick that up if you want to find out more about what do we need in Springdale, and it's not single-family houses. Also, in the newspaper a couple of weeks ago, there's, this came from the school board meeting, and they are buying some real estate, the school board was, and they're going to provide opportunity for staff members searching for a home to live. And then Dr. Cleveland stated, "We're trying to find a solution for a very difficult problem," Cleveland said. "Finding affordable housing for teachers and staff members just isn't a problem in his district," Cleveland noted. He said it's a problem all the way across northwest Arkansas. It's an issue. That was in, came from the paper, too. At the Planning Commission meeting the other night, and it's in the packet that you all got, the minutes of the meeting, I want to point out that Ms. Christie quote, "The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies, and is recommended for approval." That's your planning department. That's what you pay them for, to look at these things and give an opinion on it. I want to say that, number one, things just come to mind that were said. The people coming out of Clark Street, there's 30 lots in there, there's going to be 14 people or properties on mine. So it's not about the same, it's over twice as many coming out of Clark Street. I'll also say that the management of these properties, and we manage several here in town, they'll rent for around $1,500. You have to make probably about $50,000 a year to qualify. I know a lot of people are worried about people that are poor and have to work in a chicken plant, and all these other places we don't like to think about. We don't, I guess.
Is that been three minutes?
Three minutes has he got?
Who's running this meeting, Mayor?
He had about two seconds. But...
Who's running the meeting?
I'm running the meeting, Phillip, and he had to hear a lot of different points to address. I think it's reasonable that he would have a little more time to respond, and as we go through this process, if you have something new to say, you can also respond.
I don't want any advantage.
Go ahead. Do what?
Say you didn't want any advantage.
Okay. Thank you, sir. You may, we may have some questions for you, Phillip. I've got some points to make. And, Patsy, do we have a, do we have a slide showing the zoning around this project? I'd hope we were going to have one.
That's the adjacent property as the show where we put the sign. This is the zoning around that piece of property.
Patsy, it's zoned agricultural now, right?
Correct.
What can go in the agricultural?
Well, a single-family home on a two acre with 200-foot frontage can go in there. Any kind of animal husbandry, any of those kind of activities, manufactured home as a conditional use, single-family homes, a nursery, a landscape business, those kind of things can go in a A1 zone. It is not a standard, it's a non-conforming lot size because it's less than two acres. So there's a little bit of limitation there. That's partly, part of the reason why we need to be rezoned, something else could be done with it.
Okay.
Can you explain the colors on this map?
The yellow is a single-family SF2, which is four units per acre. The area up there that, the PUD is the Lynx, and it has a higher density, but it's a PUD, and we know the situations are different for those. There are two MF12 locations just to the north around Wynwood. There's some apartments in that property, and the property just to the north of that is zoned MF12, but it has mostly single-family homes in it. The commercial you see to the east is at the intersection of Carley and Chapman. It's been there for years. The green is the agricultural. So there's a lot of that area that is still agricultural. Those houses along Lakeview is a subdivision that's all zoned A1, came into the city that way. Valley View, that's correct, yeah.
It's a church. What's it zoned?
The church is still zoned A1, both of them. They have not come in and asked to rezone to P1. Remember, the record property owner has to be the applicant unless the city does a total map update, and we didn't go through an update. All of the churches in town are made on P1 zones, so it's still A1. Some of them you'll see in areas that may be even commercial and/or residential, because churches have to be the applicant to change them.
Got a question while you're here, Patsy.
Okay.
And I was taking several notes as I could from each of the speakers, and each, most of them caused me to have some questions in my mind, or at least some points that I think we need to be sure everyone's aware of. The point of two-story townhomes, first of all, how many units are we probably talking about being able to get on that one and a half acres?
Okay. If the rezoning request of MF12 is approved, with the multifamily design standards, their attainable density is only eight units per acre. To get anything above eight units per acre, they have to use the design incentives in the multifamily design standards, which means more open space, different kinds of materials. There are several options to get to something higher than eight units per acre.
All right. And some of these questions, this is a little unusual, in that with most rezonings, we don't get into the details about what's being built.
Right.
Actually, the property owner, the developer, has gone above and beyond to actually let everybody know as much as he has.
Correct.
And so I may ask some questions, Phillip, that you may or may not want to answer, and you're not obligated to. How many bedrooms, what are the, do you know what the makeup, as far as your thoughts right now? One-bedroom, two-bedroom?
Let me make one comment to what you just said, Mayor.
Okay.
That's a big mistake I made telling anybody what I'm going to do with that. It's a bad mistake, and I'll never do it again.
Right, and I'm not going to obligate you to answer.
Because it gives everybody something to pick at. But I will answer your question.
Okay.
They're two-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath.
Okay. The reason I ask the question is because I know if this appeal is not overturned, you've got every right to do something else. Folks, and I understand, I understand the concern under your house. You've had a, you've had an empty field with trees, and obviously you would like to keep that. But if someone purchases a piece of property, anyone, they're going to do, they're not going to just mow it and keep it for you to enjoy. They're going to develop it. And there are other options, and I want to make sure everyone's aware of these options if this appeal is denied. And this is a question either, Phillip, for you or for Patsy, it's probably more of a technical question for Patsy. What potentially, and what potentially as far as single-family, I've heard several comments that they would be okay with single-family. What could, what do you think could fit in there with all the...
If the property is rezoned to SF2, that's four units per acre, okay? Each of those minimum lots has to have a 70-foot frontage and 8,000 square feet for each lot. So the first lot could face out to 40th Street, and it could be set as close as eight feet to those side yards, to those backyards, because a side yard is eight feet.
And what's, let me just, I apologize for stopping you, but if I don't ask when I think of it, I may not get back to it. So, these homes could be as close as...
One home could be as close as eight feet.
One home could be as close as eight feet.
Because the one that fronts, if it has a front, it's 30 foot from the front, eight from the sides, and 20 from the back.
Okay.
So if a single-family homes are built down through there, and a street is built down through there, the house on the corner could have two side yards, which could put it as close as to eight feet. The rest of the houses down the street could be, were as close as 20 feet.
As close as 20 feet.
Right.
Where right now, what's the preliminary, what Phillip has proposed, is parking...
And that's true, but I don't think we ought to talk about, yeah, I don't think we ought to talk about necessarily what he's proposing.
Maybe, maybe we shouldn't, but, and I understand, this is more... Maybe, maybe we shouldn't, but, and I understand, this is, this is more than a rezoning.
True. Can I make a couple of comments before you go on?
One point I want to make is it sounds like six houses could be built there.
If they all fit and you build a street.
Okay.
And you build a street, yes.
And they, there's no rule against them being two-story?
No. The height restriction is the same for a single-family zone as it is for a multifamily.
So you could have two-story homes closer than what's proposed to these backyards?
For the house on the corner, yes. The rest of them would be 20 feet. And there is no screening requirements between single-family homes and other single-family homes.
What is the screening requirement if this is approved?
If it is multifamily, they're required to do a opaque screen, which is a ground to height of at least eight feet with visual obstructions from the opaque portion to a height of at least 20 feet. What that means is it's got to have an eight-foot fence with trees that will get to 20 feet to screen the two, because there is a screening requirement between multifamily and single-family. But there is no screening requirement to, single-family to single-family.
Okay.
The other thing to point out is we have multifamily design standards. We know what these are going to look like before they are built. If it goes to single-family, the only minimum we have for single-family homes is it has to be 24-foot wide and 24 feet deep. That's the only requirement. We don't have any materials requirements, we have no screening requirements, we have no landscaping requirements, nothing like that. With multifamily, it has to meet multifamily design standards. So that's the basic difference between the two.
Well, Mike Nelson kind of touched on that when, and Mike, when you, you know, you talked about back in the 90s, and thankfully, and you pointed it out, our planning department and our city council has made tremendous improvements on the minimum standards for multifamily, and what you're seeing built now is not anything like what we saw back then.
That's true.
I think another point is that, Phillip, what would be the maintenance, I mean, what the, I mean, the properties I see that your company maintains are well-maintained, is that something that would go with this, I'm sure?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, well, we take the idea that good people like to live in, I mean, the people that live there want to have a good, attractive place, streetscape and everything, like you would a home on Clark Street. Not any different.
Okay, thank you. And the reason, Patsy, the reason I asked about the number of homes, possibly, if you've got a, if you've got several two-story, four-bedroom homes, maybe even three-bedrooms homes, you're generating every bit as much traffic or more than what would be able to be done with the townhome.
That's a possibility. We don't have a minimum number of bedrooms or a maximum number of bedrooms. The other thing to remember is the commercial, or the multifamily design standards require maintenance and crime prevention through environmental design, the way they're designed, the way they are set on the lots. We take all that into account when we do multifamily. We don't necessarily, we don't do that at all with single-family because we have no standards for single-family. We tried, it didn't work, we're doing the best we can with what we have to work with.
Mayor, I'm glad you brought that up, because some of them, my calls, I told them that it could be worse when it's all said and done. The setbacks and all this other stuff, it could be a lot, and I tried to explain it to them, I think maybe a couple of them understood, but it could be a lot worse.
My question is, be careful what you ask for, because we can't help you with single-family. We can control the quality and the type of construction and how it's set on the property and all those things with multifamily that we can't do with single-family.
Patsy, you got a second? Let me ask a couple of questions, because it was brought up about parking. What is the maximum parking spots that could be put in there?
Well, it's based on the number of units, and since we haven't settled exactly on the number of units that we can get in there, because we don't know if they meet the open space requirement, all that kind of stuff. It's two parking spaces up to a certain number of units. I can look it up if you want all the exact details. But there are two parking spaces required for single-family homes, too.
Okay, because I know through Planning Commission last week, we were talking about a different apartment complex, and they were one and a half to two.
Right.
So would you, would you allow, or would it be allowed to have travel trailers and other kinds of utility trailers parked there as well?
It's not allowed with the multifamily design standards.
Thank you.
If it is single-family, it's what is required in the ordinance for parking of recreational vehicles in single-family lots, that's what the requirement is for those. I'm really not going to sit down, I'll just stay right here. How about that?
Patsy said, "I sure hope I don't have to speak to any of that."
Yeah, I thought maybe I wouldn't.
Did I read in the, in the minutes, does this proposed MF12, does it fit the land use map?
Well, the land use plan hasn't been updated in a long time, and we've looked at areas where we can do some infill with housing projects, and this is a typical kind of place. It would serve as a transition to a church facility that could have a gym, could have a lot of parking, could have a lot of activities in it, could have a daycare. It could serve as a buffer to that kind of use. Look at some of the larger churches around town. They can have an impact on the neighborhood with the kind of events that they have run there.
So is your answer to that question is it does not fit the land use map?
The land use plan calls for medium density. MF12 is considered to be medium density, because SF2 is low to medium density, resident, single-family residential, and MF12 is medium density, multifamily residential. Low density is less than four units per acre. We have ones on the, you know, we have, where you have 100-foot frontage, larger lots, and then, but SF2 is what we see typically in this area, that's four units per acre, considered to be low to medium. I'm going to try one more time. Are we good?
Unless I'm missing something, as far as infrastructure, bond, project, we don't have anything planned to do on 40th Street.
Well, 40th Street is a collector's street, it functions as that, that's what his purpose is.
But we don't have anything else as far as traffic right now to do anything else with that intersection, anything down the road. Nothing in the works.
Well, we haven't, up to this point, you know, when the Lynx came in, we had a lot of discussion about whether the street was going to handle it. It handles it. Yes, there is a traffic congestion problem in the mornings when school goes into session in the afternoon, but we have that all over town. We're not designing streets to take care of that 15 minutes in the afternoon, 15 minutes in the morning, because then you're overbuilding what we really don't need. It has a center turn light.
My biggest concern, the reason I ask that, is vision with people, and some of them aren't here tonight, that do live in Peaceville Valley, that multiple times a day, sometimes even on Saturdays when Tyson Park's busy.
Yep.
They're having to turn south to go north.
Yeah.
And, and I get this is a great project, but I'm...
But that's the park causing the problem, not the housing development.
Well, and you got two schools, and it's multiple times a day.
A couple of times a day.
I'm just, that's my issue. I think it's a great project. My biggest concern is the traffic and the intersection and moving people. If we've already got people going south to go north, that's where I'm coming from.
So if you're saying that, then what would be the density that would be allowed on that piece of property would be one unit, because that's two cars? If it's single-family, is it, if it's SF2, that allows for six cars or six units, so is, you know, the equivalent of six units too much for it, too, because it's the traffic situation?
Depending on how many bedrooms they had.
Well, but we don't have anything with single-family that understands or even addresses how many bedrooms.
I agree, but I'm thinking of the potential traffic.
Right.
Yes, sir, after, come on up, we'll let you go one more time. Please keep it, please keep it brief. You look like you have something specific you want to address.
Well, again, it just, it seems like that we were coming up with all these reasons that we shouldn't put single-family housing in there, that there's no controls, that there's all these issues. Well, every house in our neighborhood's already there, but they do, they take care of it. You go drive-through, it's a great, great neighborhood, and any of those houses they put up on there are not going to have a parking lot light, it's going to beam over to everyone else. Again, she said, you know, six houses is, that's 12 cars, 14 times two is 28 cars, so that will be a significant difference.
Sir, six houses may be a whole lot more than 12 cars.
Well...
If you've got two or three, or if you've got three or four-bedroom homes.
She has 41 car spaces in that, but I'm thinking that that, I'm giving some slack there, so. But anyway, I just think that, you know, the people in this room kind of feel like that of all the rock and a hard place decisions that we've been, we've been brought up to, single-family homes is the best. We can handle the variances, we can, but those people are going to move in there, they're going to spend at least five years, because that's what you got to do, and they're going to become our neighbors, people we know, people we walk the street with. So I feel like that, you know, I understand, I don't think that it fits the property at all, but, but, you know, got to realize, like you said, that Mr. Taldo has a lot of options, and he stated that he has the power to do all these things. People on Clark Street have no option, no Plan B. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one follow-up comment. I know the people in that neighborhood want those same kind of houses built. I understand that, but I don't have any way to require that that same kind of house be built. Be careful what you ask for, because once you rezoned to SF2, we've lost control of what kind of houses they are, what size they are, what they're made of, and really even the quality. If they meet the minimum fire and building code, then they can go there. That's, and I understand, those people have great houses, but I can't, from my position, guarantee them that that's the kind of houses that's going to go in there. That's my concern.
You're also, well, we're in a much different, we're in a much different world than when we built houses on two lot, two-acre lots.
Correct.
And housing is an issue, and besides that, there are more and more people choosing, the people younger than me choose, I know, it's most everybody, choose to live...
Probably except for me, but yeah.
In, in places where they don't have a yard to take care of, they don't have, and I think more, to get back at Jeff, I think several seniors are beginning to see more, more attraction to this. It's not, and I'm glad, I want to congratulate the audience, because they didn't get into a lot of things that really pushed me away, like the kind of people that live in apartments and those kinds of things, because that has, that has really changed. And I'll tell you, the kind of people who, who would live in this type of development are some of our young policemen, some of our young firefighters, some of our young teachers, and they would be great neighbors whether they're there for one year or for 20 years. And so I just think we need to, we need to know that things have changed, and I understand, I understand the concern, but I'm surprised I didn't get the question, or the council didn't get the question, "How would you feel if this was in your backyard?" I was kind of hoping I'd get it, because I can tell you, I live in an older neighborhood on Rogers Circle Drive. I love my neighborhood, just like you love your neighborhood, and almost everybody in Springdale loves their neighborhood, but I would welcome such a development if there was a place to put it. And I'm speaking totally honest. Now, everybody's, everybody's free to their opinion, but I did get that question in some emails, and I felt like I needed to answer it. Now, let me tell you this, as far as the, just so you'll know the process here, before we vote, a lot of you are going to like to hear this, but more than likely, I won't get to vote. In Arkansas, we've got an eight-member council, it'll take five votes to approve this overturn of this denial. The mayor is only allowed to vote if he is the fifth, he or she is the fifth vote needed for passage. There's no such thing as a mayor being able to vote no. If I'm, if I would be the fifth vote for passage, if I choose to do so, I could vote yes. If I choose not to do so, then the motion, the, the appeal would fail. So I just wanted you to know how that works, because I have no idea what the numbers are going to be up here. It's very seldom I get a chance to vote, but I wanted to, I wanted to explain that so you would understand. Do, one, yes, sir, you haven't, go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you for letting me speak. I'm Clifford Moore, and I live at 4007 Clark Avenue. I bought my house in 2018. Got beautiful neighbors. That yard, that field back there, when I took it over, it was growed up. I went out there myself and took care of that. Ever since I've lived there, I mowed it and kept it up, and I trimmed the trees real nice, and it hasn't been said, but we greatly appreciate you taking care of that, that dump that was there, you know, because it was, it was a mess. It was a suicide for us. We, we understand you got to develop something, but big townhouses just don't fit. Duplexes or something, it'll fit in our neighborhood. That's all we ask for. We understand it's your land, but be respectful for our land, too. And that's all I've got to say.
Thank you, Cliff.
So please, yeah, briefly, yeah.
The real quick question I've had is, oh, I've got a couple of questions. What's the width of the street in terms of, if you look at that lot, the width of it versus the width of Clark with the housing on both sides is completely different, and the lot doesn't suit multifamily housing? I think it's a little bit of a, in my opinion, it's a little bit of a red herring to say that we take a whole bunch of risks by having single-family housing, because there would be less density, density on that property, and in fact, even though there is somewhat of a quality risk, the quality will be determined by the marketplace. So the market will determine whether or not those single-family houses will be able to be turned and sold, and people want to live in them long-term. The market will not be able to dictate on an individual basis, multifamily housing. The other question I've got real quick...
Let me address that first, because just, just the other, just the other side of that, I want to be sure everybody's aware, there's no guarantee that these are going to be owner-occupied if they're single-family homes.
I understand, but there's no guarantee on any other single-family housing, too.
Which may, which may determine the need for the level of quality.
I understand, but the level of quality will be determined on a single-family basis versus a multifamily where it's spread out much more, much more risky, in my opinion. That's my opinion. The other thing is, does this create a precedent in this area whereby next week I could come down and I could put my property up for rezoning and put in 55 units or 50 units? Does this create a precedent within that area whereby the next person can come in and say, "Hey, you voted this and changed it over, why am I not getting denied?" The other thing is, is what was the factual basis that the zoning commission used to deny it, and why is that different now?
I, I can't answer that. I was at the, I was, again, I was listening to the meeting in the next room, but...
See, they are experts in that area of approvals or not.
It was, it was 5-4.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, that's all I...
5-3, there was, there was one person, yeah, they were one person short, I think, yeah, of the nine members.
Thank you. Just, I'll keep it real short.
I want to thank you all for listening to us. I want to thank you all for thinking about this. It does impact everyone out there. I'm going to be good with whatever you do, okay? But I just want to thank you again for looking at this, and, you know, it's not anything light. Mr. Taldo, he's not going to put something junky in there. The man, I've seen some of his projects, so whatever we can do, I know he's, he'll do the right thing, okay? Thank you.
Well, I had a thought, and it, it's somewhere out there. All right, we have a motion and a second. Council, you have any other comments before we vote?
Yes, folks, no, the chairman knows.
That's, that's in, that's in line with your motion, and is second. All right, Denise, I think we're ready.
So clarify that again.
Sorry.
Clarify that again? Yes?
A yes vote would be to overturn the appeal, or, I mean, I mean, I'm sorry, approve the appeal, overturn the zoning, the Planning Commission, and a no would be to support, or to support the Planning Commission's decision.
Watson? Overton?
I have no qualms about the quality of this project. I have no qualms about the integrity of Mr. Taldo. The problem I have, when you look at this, when you look at the map, that this is spot zoning, and therefore my vote is no.
Lawson?
No, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes.
Harriman?
No.
Fujirus?
Yes.
Powell?
No.
Taldo?
The planning commission's decision is upheld by a vote of five to two with one recusal.
I wanna thank everybody again, y'all, y'all did yourself well, and, and comported yourself in a way that, that was very respectful, and we all appreciate that. So thank you. All right. I think we're ready to move on to item nine, planning commission report and recommendations by Patsy Christie, Director of Planning and Community Development. Patsy?
The first item is an ordinance to accept the replat of lots two and three of block two of Sam's addition. They're making a new property line adjustment. We have non-large-scale development plans for both of these projects, and they have, this is the, the line that the, both of those projects have adhered to. Planning Commission recommends approval of the replat. The title of the ordinance reads an ordinance accepting the replat of lots two and three, block two of Sam's addition, Sam's Club addition to the city of Springdale, Arkansas, declaring an emergency.
Move the ordinance be adopted. Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Taldo?
Yes.
Watson?
Move emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Taldo?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
Well, we seem to have lost the slide for the next one. Oh, no, it's the right one. This is to accept the final plat of Lucky subdivision, which is, that's not what that is. I'm not sure. Let me see, oh, there it is. Okay. That's Lucky subdivision. This came in as a large-scale development plan, and they since decided to go and split off a two-acre lot on the very, adjacent to the access easement to this second lot. Street improvements are already completed, there's not anything else that to do, so this is a final plat. Planning Commission recommends approval, as an ordinance accepting the final plat of Lucky subdivision in the city of Springdale, Arkansas, declaring an emergency. And we do have a large scale in process on lot one.
Move the ordinance pass.
Okay, we have a motion second to approve the ordinance.
What does that do to that portion of it, just to the north of the-
It doesn't do anything to it.
I mean, it-
It's a separate track.
It's, there's two tracks, right?
Yeah, there's two tracks to the north, and it, it has no effect on those, they stay just like they are.
I think you need to go back one, Patsy, or forward one.
That just, just, just north of the blue or purple.
Well, that's a narrow strip that has a drive that goes to this lot in the back. Remember? Yeah, there's no minimum lot sizes in a commercial zone. So it meets all the, all the requirements for it, and that will be the access. They do have an access easement to have, let lot two have access to that private drive, so we don't have to have another driveway on 40th Street. They just decided they wanna keep that little two-acre lot in that building that's there, and not let it go.
Do we have a motion?
We have a motion. Did, I don't, did we get a second? Oh, we did, okay. That's right. Anybody in the audience need to speak to this? Okay, Denise?
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Taldo?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Move emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Harriman? Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Taldo?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
And the last item is kind of a unique situation. We had a final plat for Spring Creek Farm subdivision, phase one, approved. It had the wrong street names on it, and the only way to correct those street names is to go through a replat. So we will be changing the name from Teton Trail to Teton Trail Avenue. Cowboy Cove to Cowboy Street. Farmhouse Way to Farmhouse Street. Hillcrest Terrace to Hillcrest Street, and Hawk Lane to Hawk Street, and Range Road to Range Avenue. And that's to bring it in compliance with the naming requirements of the City's Code of Ordinances, telling you what kind of suffix it has, so you know what kind of street it is. And the title of the ordinance reads an ordinance to replat Spring Creek Farm subdivision, phase one, to replace street names. Yeah.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the audience? Okay, Denise?
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Taldo?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Does this have emergency clause, Patsy?
Is there a reason to have an emergency clause, Patsy?
I guess it's a national one, because they placed them in the ordinance, so it's a- The, the ordinance in the packet's got an emergency clause on it.
Okay, the national emergency clause, yeah.
Move emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Powell?
Yes.
Taldo? Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
All right, thank you. And now we'll move to item ten, Finance Committee, Chairwoman Amelia Taldo. Amelia?
Thank you, Mayor. First item on our agenda under Finance Committee is a resolution authorizing the execution of a construction contract for West Emma Avenue Extension, project number 23BPS01. This is present, was presented by Ryan Carr. And this, as well as the other items under Finance Committee, were all recommended for approval.
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second to approve. I know we talked about it during committee, if there are no, there's question, if Ryan's here, if there are any questions. In the audience, any questions? Okay, roll call.
Taldo?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
I'm so sorry.
Do you ever get the feeling everybody was looking at you, wondering?
I'm so sorry. The next item is a resolution authorizing the execution of professional services agreement for construction phase services on West Emma Avenue Extension, phase, sorry, Avenue Extension, presented by Ryan Carr.
Move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? Anyone? Denise?
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Taldo?
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
And lastly, we have a resolution authorizing the execution of a relocation agreement with Carroll Electric Cooperative Corporation for Kendrick Avenue, project number 18BPS16, also presented by Ryan Carr.
Move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any further comment? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Taldo?
Yes.
Watson?
Carries eight zero.
Turn number, item number 11 over to our city attorney, Ernest.
Thank you, Mayor. Items 11A and 11B are related. 11A is for a public hearing on a proposed amendment to change the name of a private street from Animal Emergency Drive to Metroplex Drive. And item B is an ordinance amending chapter 110, article six, street names and address numbers to change the name of, of an existing street. We received a petition to rename Animal Emergency Drive to Metroplex Drive pursuant to the ordinance. We sent out notice to anyone whose mailing address would change due to this proposed change, and I did receive comments from one property owner that is in, that is in favor of this change, as well as the petitioner, so that's two. And then one property owner who is not in favor of changing it back to Metroplex Drive. And I don't know if anyone's, I think the petitioner's here, and-
I'm with the emergency clause.
Okay. But, Mr. Fowler? Okay. So it's, looks like there's folks here on both sides, so.
We wanna allow them comment here at the public hearing? It sounds like that would make sense, rather than-
And the reason that these public hearings weren't put on, at the beginning of the agenda was because state law requires, when you do a vacation, a right-of-way easement, you have to have a public hearing before the agenda, whereas this is a city ordinance that doesn't require it. So it's easier just to put these together, is why we did it this way. So there are here people here for the change, and people here against the change.
Y'all like to hear from them now, because we're really not to the item where we would entertain in a, a motion, so. Come on, come on up, and let's, let's handle this during the public hearing.
I just put together a prepared statement here, and I'm just gonna read from that. My name is Daniel Hawes, and in 2001, an investment group I'm a part of named Lickety Split Farms purchased 7.67 acres. The property has frontage on Interstate 49, and is currently accessed by an owned private road formerly known as Metroplex Drive. This private road is owned by us. We pay taxes on the road, and is, as it is part of the, the property. We pay monthly interest on this road, and we are ultimately responsible for any maintenance associated with the road, as there is an easement recorded on a private road that services another building. We do not own this building or the animal clinic operating at this address. I'm a real estate investor, investing in speculative land acquisition and development. Our plans were always to flip the land or develop a commercial subdivision. We feel as if we purchased this property at enough of a discount to absorb the approximate $60,000 in annual interest payments while we marketed the property and explored development. The name Metroplex Drive always had value to us, as the name fit with our commercial aspirations for the property. Now imagine our surprise this summer, when we're driving by the property, noticing the name of our private road has been changed to Animal Emergency Way. We contacted the city attorney, inquiring about the change, and, and was told it was a public street. In fact, if you look at the ordinance that was passed on March 28th, 2023, by this council, you will notice that it is an ordinance to change the name of a public street, but it is in fact private. We provided proof of our ownership via a survey, as well as a deeded legal, legal description to the city attorney. Mr. Kate subsequently allowed us to be heard and put on the agenda. I give you all this background on the property and our plans for it, because the street name is important to us. It's not like we've owned the property for decades and have no, no plans for it. Additionally, we feel the name change was performed in bad faith due to the lack of notification, as well as the confusion over the public-private nature of the road. We had zero input over a private street name change that solely benefits the users of an easement, and not the street owners themselves. While I understand the city is within their rights to change street names, both public and private, this name change wasn't done to align with the city grid or for historical significance, but rather to benefit a neighboring private business that happens to utilize an easement on our land. We would respectfully ask that you rescind the ordinance or change the name of our, of our private road back to Metroplex Drive. Thank you. It's Daniel Hawes. Daniel Hawes, H-A-W-E-S.
Mr. Hawes, the only thing I'll say in response to that is, I'm not sure who you're suggesting made the name change in bad faith, but I assure you, there was no bad faith from this council.
And, and I, I understand that, what I'm alluding to-
Unfortunately, when this one came before us, we didn't have the procedures in place that we now have for notification. So we did make changes, but unfortunately for you, it was a little too late.
And, and my, my comment to that would be, just, the comment about that bad faith just simply refers to the fact that, for, for me, there's just confusion over whether it was a public road or a private road. When we first contacted, contacted Mr. Kate, he alluded to the fact that, no, it was, it was a public street, and, okay. Well, so then I, I went back to the, did title work, did the whole nine yards, and found the fact that, no, we, we've been paying taxes on it, we actually, we actually own it.
Obviously, had we had the requirement for notification at that time, that would've given you that opportunity then.
Oh, understood, yeah.
Unfortunately, we didn't, so.
Understood.
Right.
And he, he's, he's correct. I mean, we, we've, we've fallen on our sword. We, we definitely thought this was a, everyone thought this was a public street, and then we had, saw the blue sign, and we had to, we had to backtrack. So he's correct about that, that we were in good faith mistaken, and we thought it was a, we thought it was a public street. And, and Mr. Watson is correct, too, that we have since amended our procedures to make sure everyone's noticed, notified. That's why Mr. Fowler got noticed, the folks at Animal Emergency got noticed, and Lickety Split Farms got noticed, so.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
All right, thank you.
I'm Steve Fowler. Address is 4746 Maple Grove Drive in Fayetteville. Actually have a Springdale zip code, so I'm one of those properties in between there. So I have a property on, what is it now? Animal Emergency. I didn't get the first other notice. You could've said it, and I didn't know it, but if I had of, I would've been objecting, and really on the same principle, and that is that, it's kind of, I don't mean any intention to you guys, but, you know, it's, it's a shaky policy to start naming a street after a business. And, you know, streets mean something.
Just hang around till the next item.
And, you know, the slippery road is, is that if this stays at Animal Emergency Drive instead of Metroplex, and I sell my property, my guy's probably gonna say, well, let's change it to the, you know, Metroplex Office Complex, you know? And, and then, you didn't mention Neri Kushner, I don't believe, but he also voiced, vocalized to you yesterday about wanting to go back to Metroplex as well. But if he sells his property, that guy says, I wanna change mine to such-and-such, you know? And it just, it goes on and on. And there's only Neri Kushner that has Super 8, and he has a parcel next to mine, and then this property, I'm in between them, I have 7.69 acres. And then I guess you got Meeks on the other side, Meeks and Super 8 are on the front. I, I don't know if they really care about that, but the other three parcels are back at the end of the street, and it means a lot. This name kind of suggests that that's what's back there, you know? And it leaves the other people out. And like I say, I can't name an office complex if I sell it and they just do that to, you know, Animal Emergency Office Complex because that indicates something entirely different than what a normal name would be. You know, if there's a hotel, you could have a hotel that may say Hilton Metroplex, but you're not going to have a hotel that says Hilton Animal Emergency, you know. I mean, it's real confusing when you start going down that road. And that's, you know, that's my main thing. I'm for business. I understand the need, wanting advertising. I used to be in advertising business, but you know, I believe they have a slide sign out on Sunset Now. I don't know what the sign policy is for a pile-on. Something like that would be more, you know, beneficial and you wouldn't have the naming, you know, complexities you have with the way it is right now. So like I say, you're kind of opening yourself up for, not just here, but all over town for somebody saying, I want this to be my business name. And then they go out of business and say, well, I want to change it to be my business name. You know, so that's the road you're going down. But like I say, it does affect our properties. Metroplex is a good generic name. I kind of liked, we had the property when it was Rio Bravo and over there and that, you know, that was a pretty good name. But Metroplex implies a, you know, a business complex of some sort, some type of business entity at the end of the road and it's not nailing to one other. Actually, the animal shelter, I mean, sorry, Animal Emergency, you know, they could have been the Metroplex Animal Emergency, you know. So all of them could use that Metroplex name. But it's not specific. It's generic enough to accommodate everybody. And so, you know, I am for going back to Metroplex. And like I say, if you'll clarify that on Neri, you know, he showed yesterday that he wanted to go back to Metroplex as well.
Correct. That's correct.
That's three yeses. And we're the only ones there that aren't developed right now. Other than that, you've got this center here and then you have Meeks and Super 8. So you're dealing with three property owners. Two are here tonight and the other expressed the same concern, you know, about, you know...
What's your name again?
Steve.
What's your name again?
Steve Fowler. And ours is on Neri's and ours is on the west side of Metroplex, sorry, Animal Emergency Drive. And we go from Sunset to the end of the street on that side.
Okay. Thanks, Steve.
Appreciate it.
Can I just make one more quick comment? It's my understanding too, based on an article I read in the Business Journal yesterday, that the Animal Emergency Hospital has actually changed hands as well over the last week or so. Okay. The building did.
I'm not sure that would...
Yeah, so it's a private business versus a, they're a tenant in a building that, you know.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Come on up.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dr. Shaw. I'm the medical director and one of the owners of the Animal Emergency Clinic. And I'm in a pretty rough spot right here because, you know, we, I had no way to try to hurt anybody. We came to the city council and asked for a road name change. It was totally unopposed and then we were granted that name change. And in reliance on that, I've spent thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars on marketing with brochures and magnets and door clings. I've driven around to every vet clinic in about a 200-mile radius and passed all those things out. I've had, you know, we, we're an emergency place. It's very important to be able to find us very quickly. When the road change name happened, it took almost two months for Google Apps and Google Maps and Apple Maps to change. So we had constant confusion of where, where are y'all? How do I get to y'all? They couldn't find us on any mapping app, et cetera. So we got through all that. Everything settled down. We know where we are. People can find us on the mapping apps. And then now we're wanting to change again. Metroplex Drive or Animal Emergency Clinic Drive, in the grand scheme of things, is not going to make or break my business, but I'm going to have to spend thousands and thousands of dollars to now go back and reverse, hey, remember six months ago when we changed the name? Now we're changing it again, back to what it was. I'm going to have to go through and, and so really it's just an undue burden on me as a business owner trying to pay for all of my marketing materials because in veterinary medicine, marketing right now is everything. And then also just it's an undue burden on the public because they're not going to know, at least for another five to six months, we're going to have mass confusion on where we're going. You know, we're not a pottery shop where, oh, well, I couldn't find it today. I'll find it tomorrow. We need to be found now when we need to be found. You know, sometimes minutes make a big difference in saving an animal's life. And so in changing the name back, we're going to definitely incur a lot of costs for marketing and we're going to also have to have those situations, those people that can't find us. And so again, I hate that this is a spot that we're at. And I mean, yeah, they have valid points. My main point is it was just changed like less than six months ago. I relied on that. I did everything based off of that. And again, I had no ill will towards anybody. Yeah, it was a little bit of marketing and maybe that's not what should be done, but we're on a hole down at the end of the street that no one can find us. And so like, hey, at least the street name, people can see us. And right now, that's mainly how people find us is because of the name of the street. So I hope you all would think about it and think about a guy that's busting his butt trying to make a living in the city and cut me some slack. Thanks.
Thank you. Ernest, is we ask for any other comment?
Yeah, I've read the title of the ordinance that would change it from Animal Emergency Drive to Metroplex Drive. I don't know if it's appropriate to ask, but am I correct of the sign ordinance that since this, since their property is adjacent, if they were to work out an agreement with, they would be, have a sign on Sunset?
So Ernest's question, I think, is could they be on a shared sign? Is that right?
Well, my understanding is that a freestanding sign on an adjacent business that has a separately licensed business is allowed, like an off-premise sign.
Here comes our sign enforcer.
I'm just trying to figure out his options.
It's a cold day. To paraphrase the signed ordinance, an adjacent property that street frontage can have with a properly executed, I believe, recorded lease agreement, an off-premise sign. So for example, this case, if Mr. Hawes's company owns Rio Bravo or Metroplex or whatever his drive now, they can designate a spot on Sunset that allows the animal clinic to have a freestanding sign there. And that area, sign can be up to 30 square feet, 30 square, I'm sorry, I'm losing my mind, 150 square feet. So depending what they do.
So who are the adjacent property owners that would, he would have to go to? Are they on the corner? Meeks is on the corner and then... But who actually has the corner lot?
It actually go either way. It can go to Meeks because they're adjacent to Meeks or it can go to Mr. Hawes because he has that property that again surrounds them.
So it'd be, it'd be really nice if, I mean, we, you know, bottom line is we screwed up on this deal, I think. And I don't know how to fix it. I mean, Dr. Shaw has really good points. And by the way, doctor, I took my dog there for disticular disease or something like that shortly before we made this change because I knew where you were when we made the change. But, so I found you, but y'all, your clinic is top-notch. I mean, they did a really good job. But, but I also understand these fellows' arguments and it would really be nice if we could figure out a way to fix this. I don't know if Mr. Hawes is willing to do that or not, but, so I don't know. Maybe we need to just table this and give...
That has nothing to do with the price of tea in China because the, like the ordinance says, you have to have, you have to have a less E on your land if you're going to add them to your sign, which is on the corner. And this is a different proposal altogether because they're not a less E to them.
Correct.
My apologies, Mr. Overtone, if I didn't make that clear. They can have a sign at the corner of whatever this drive is in Sunset today for that tenant if they have a properly executed lease agreement.
If they have, if it's a tenant of the owner.
You know, the ordinance didn't speak to that. It could be between the animal hospital and them or it could be the property owner and them.
Well, yeah, between, but it has to be a, an agreement between the property owner and the...
And where the adjacent property is. Yes, sir.
That's what you held me to in the past.
So what you're saying is the person who owns this building where the Animal Emergency Center is, that person would have to get with the owners of the land up by...
No, that doesn't, that doesn't fall under our ordinance.
I think it does.
You think it does?
I've got it. It says, provided the adjacent property owner has a separately licensed business, which they do, and a properly executed and recorded easement or lease agreement.
They have to have a lease for what?
For the sign.
Oh, for the sign.
We're kind of conflating, we're conflating the name of the, renaming the street with...
For the sign only.
With approving an off-premises sign, it sounds to me like.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, as Dr. Shaw indicated, that'd be fine with him. I mean, we're in, he's in, he is definitely between a rock and a hard place. We kind of are too, but in the, so there's some way to fix it. Maybe we should give them the opportunity to try to fix it before we...
I don't think we can mandate that.
But if they come back to us at the next meeting and say, hey, we got a good agreement. We're okay with that. Let's just go ahead and change the name back.
Well, what difference would it make in changing the name now than later if we're...
But I think we decide whether it's the right thing or not to change the name.
Well, we did not, we did not, we did not notify the property, proper owner because we had no way of, based on the county records, we had no way of knowing the, when we passed... When, at the time when it, when we changed it, we didn't, we knew who the property owner was of the street?
If you recall, this predates even Metroplex back when it was changed from Rio Bravo to Metroplex. I believe that ordinance identified it as a public street then incorrectly. And let me also say too, Mr. Hawes has offered to dedicate that to the city as a city street, which of course would mean the city would take over the maintenance. And I told him I didn't think that was something that the council would be interested in doing, but he did make that offer.
Yeah, briefly. Yeah, Steve.
I was just going to say that, you know, as far, I mean, and that's what I was talking about when I said, you know, a better way to do it is a pile-on type scenario. And I hadn't talked to an area about that specifically, but I would say there's a good chance that he would, you know, possibly consider a lease there. And then you have Meeks on the other side. So you have two opportunities, you know, to do that. And that is better than the street sign. I mean, they have a slide sign out there right now and that's what you see quicker than you see the street sign.
I agree to Jeff's point that it would be nice if this was all worked out, but I don't, I don't see that as part of renaming the street. I got, I got a real concern about a person or people who own a private street not being able to name it what they want to name it.
Right. Yeah. I don't have a problem with that either, but like I say, I think that could happen, but if it doesn't...
A move of the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Do what?
Can I quickly just ask?
You can come back up to the microphone and quickly before we vote, but please keep it brief.
I was wondering, do we know, do I have legal recourse to come back for the 30 grand I'm going to spend on marketing to fix y'all's mistake?
I'm not the city attorney, but I'd say no.
Well, you're sitting next to him. So I'm just making that point that like y'all just cost me 30 grand from a clerical error and that's upsetting.
Well, I, I wouldn't call it a clerical error. Like I said, it predated Metroplex back when it was renamed from Rio Bravo to Metroplex and...
Yeah, I don't know why we had the public hearing six months ago though, if it's just going to change every six months. If they chise in six months, can they change it to a different name if Metro's not selling for them?
I've been here 25 and a half years and I could probably count on maybe one and a half hands, how many times we've changed a street name in that time. Less than 10.
I mean, I understand y'all in a rough spot, but I just want y'all to remember I'm in a really rough spot here too. Thanks.
Question, Ernest. I thought we were taking those comments during the public hearing and I don't think we ever read the title to the ordinance.
I did. I read it.
Okay. So now we're out of the public hearing?
Yes, and we've got a motion and a second.
Okay.
Any other comments before we vote? Roll call.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Taldo.
Yes.
Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Carrier 80 wrote, does not have an emergency clause because it'll take some time to get the switch back.
Should we do an emergency clause to speed that up?
No, it'll take IT some time to...
I do hope though that he's able to get a sign put down there because like Jeff said, and I've used that clinic twice, if it weren't for knowing about where it was located from these meetings, that would...
For the record, we do have every intent of reaching out and trying to work something out, just for the record.
Appreciate that.
All right, so the next item is similar. It's also a public hearing and a proposed ordinance to change the name of a portion of Christian Avenue to Neil's Cafe Avenue. And that would be the portion between North Thompson and Virginia. And this is an ordinance amending Chapter 110, Article 6, street names and address numbers to change the name of an existing city street. Is there anyone here that wishes to comment on this?
Ernest, how many names? There's only one. Is there just one building that's going to have to change the address?
That's correct. There is one mailing address that would change and I did provide them with a certified letter and they did sign for the letter and I received no contact from them. So I'll close the public hearing and I've read the title of the ordinance.
Any action?
Move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the audience need to speak to this? Okay, roll call.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Taldo.
No.
Watson.
Mr. Hawes made very good points and I tend to agree with him and I think we're just setting a bad precedent here, so I'm also going to vote no.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Carrier 62. 11 is an ordinance amending a portion of utility easement on Washington County Tax Parcel Number 815-293-00-011 pursuant to Arkansas Code Annotated 14-301-301 et cetera, declaring an emergency for other purposes. This is on the Georgia Elementary property there, just relocation, relocating a portion of utilities.
The ordinance be adopted.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear all that.
Ordinance be adopted.
Okay, thank you, Rick.
Second.
And a second. Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the ordinance. Any other comments or questions? Anyone in the audience? Kay Denise?
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Taldo.
Yes.
Watson. Overton. Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Move the emergency clause be adopted. Second.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Taldo.
Yes.
Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance, emergency clause, carry 80. Item 13 is an ordinance authorizing a city clerk to file a cleanup lien for the removal of overgrown brush and debris on property located within the city, Springdale, Arkansas, declaring emergency. Properties at 2307 North Thompson and 610 North Kansas Street.
Move ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments?
Properties at 2307 North Thompson and 610 North Kansas Street.
Move ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Anyone? All right, Denise?
Powell.
Yes.
Taldo.
Yes.
Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fuggerus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause, carry 8-0.
All right, thank you. Item, well, we'll go ahead, item 14, get that out of the way, and then, and then do the one that we put at item 15. Item 14, a discussion regarding the date of the second city council meeting in January.
Committee meeting.
Committee meeting, I'm sorry. So that's Martin Luther King, is that right?
I move for the 16th.
Wait, wait, what, what was it?
The 16th.
Is that Tuesday night?
I will tell you, I don't, not that it's influencing your decision one way or the other, but we do have a raisin removal that's slated to, we used that date, the 16th. So we have a raisin removal that's slated to come to that committee meeting, and we used, that's the date we used when we sent out the, the letter, assuming it would be...
The 16th is the date used?
Yes. We assumed it would be moved from the 15th to the 16th.
I'll rescind my motion.
I second your recession.
It was the 16th. No, that's what he said. In other words, he was saying, hey, that's good, because that's what he told them.
Then I will, then I will rein, now I'm gonna reinstate my motion, 16th.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
You made everything harder.
Yeah. We have a motion, a second, to move it to the 16th, which would be next Tuesday. Any other comments or questions? Roll call.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman. Fuggerus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Taldo.
Yes.
Unless you want to hear Ernest or me read the whole thing, we need to go back, that we read by title only.
Motion that, first motion be... Second.
All right, roll call.
Overton. Lawson. Bailey. Harriman.
Yep.
Fuggerus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Taldo.
Yes.
Watson.
Mr. Bailey vote?
Yes.
Do you not have anything else to do?
Take the two votes.
All right, thank you.
All right, so this is...
I'd just like to see us follow state law one time.
This is a resolution authorizing payment of an invoice project number 23BPP1.
Move, resolution pass.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second, to approve the resolution. Roll call.
Lawson.